Are we ready?
I think so.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Winterville Town Council April meeting. Today is April the 10th, and we would like to welcome everyone here, everyone that's watching. Invitation will be given by Councilman Tony Moore, and then we'll follow with the Pledge of Leeches.
Stand, please.
Everyone can turn and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone that's in the audience here tonight. My name is Ricky Hines, Mayor, and you can see our esteemed council here. So we're glad to have everybody in attendance tonight. Next on the item is approval of the agenda. Madam?
Yes, if I could just quickly point out that you all have an amended agenda at your seats, and it's just two small changes. We have added a new business item, and it's denoted as number five, with the bottom two just moving down. We added library board appointment for discussion this evening. And then, under items for future agenda work sessions, we changed the date for the town manager's performance review to May 15th at five. That's it.
All right. Okay, everyone has seen the amended agenda. What is your pleasure?
A move for approval.
My second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Robinson, second by Councilman Moy. If you will please vote by the roll call by manager.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilwoman Harrell. Mayor Protemeoy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next up, we have recognition of our new employees and FF Chief, please come to the podium.
These gentlemen have been excited all day.
Come on up here, gentlemen. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. These are to be our three newest police officers.
Bless you.
From your right to left, Mr. Patrick Ellis, Mr. Devin Ivy, Mr. Alex Hopper. He recently graduated from Edgecombe Community College, basic law enforcement training. And the SBI fingerprint results are kind of delaying our paperwork, but it should be in this week, and we'll be swearing them in hopefully next week. Like to say anything? But we're happy to have them. Like every law enforcement agency, we are short staffed, so we need to get them trained and out-serving our community.
Well, welcome aboard, young men. We really appreciate y'all selecting Winterville to start your career in law enforcement and stay safe and help our community.
They've already started their investigative part of the job by looking for a lot of old documents from me, so they've been very helpful, and I appreciate that.
Where do you live at? Where do you live?
I live in Winterville.
Winterville's what?
Oh, it's fun.
Well, thank y'all guys again.
Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have a proclamation, and I think proclamation will be read by town manager.
Oh, yes, sir. We have a proclamation for National Community College Month, whereas Pitt Community College is one of 58 institutions that comprise the North Carolina Community College system, which provides high-quality, affordable, and accessible educational opportunities to nearly 600,000 students annually in an effort to develop a globally competent workforce and improve lives. And whereas Pitt Community College serves nearly 20,000 curriculum in continuing education students annually and has proven to be a valuable source of higher education in Pitt County and eastern North Carolina for more than 62 years. And whereas Pitt Community College has demonstrated exceptional dedication to helping students, particularly low-income students and students of color, achieve their goals for academic success, personal growth, and economic opportunity. And whereas Pitt Community College has made a concerted effort to recruit and support Pitt County adult learners between the ages of 25 and 44 years old to help them acquire skills and credentials that can change their family's economic trajectory. And whereas Pitt Community College has partnered with Pitt County Schools on a technical academy that is preparing the next generation of quality craftsmen and women. And whereas Pitt Community College is leading Pitt County's effort to reduce recidivism by helping individuals who have been incarcerated overcome obstacles like homelessness, unemployment, substance abuse, transportation, and mental health issues to successfully rejoin their communities upon their release. And whereas Pitt Community College offers an array of educational services, including curriculum programs, short-term continuing education credentials, and customized training to prepare a skilled local workforce that meets the needs of existing business and industry while attracting new economic growth. And whereas Pitt Community College is committed to educating and empowering people for success while adhering to the North Carolina Community College System's original mission of keeping the door open to all individuals seeking a higher education and taking them from where they are educationally to where they want to go. And whereas, in recognition of the important contribution of community and technical colleges to the nation's educational system, in 1985, the U.S. Congress authorized and requested then-President Ronald Reagan to issue Proclamation 5418, establishing a National Community College Month. Now therefore be it resolved that Winterville's Town Council does hereby proclaim this month as National Community College Month.
Thank you. And also too, we do have, Dr. Rouse is in the house. They mean to sound like that, but Dr. Rouse is here tonight with us. And also, we have council, I keep calling you councilman, but County Commissioner Smith is also with us too, and we want to welcome both of y'all here. But before the next thing comes up, the council had an opportunity this past Thursday to attend a ribbon cutting on one of the newest buildings in Winterville, and that was the Eddie and Joe Allison Smith Center for Student Advancement at Pitt Community College. And you're gonna probably hear a little bit more from Dr. Rouse about it, but let me tell you, it was an awesome, it's an awesome building. If you get a chance, you should go by, see it. I mean, this building is nice. It was a nice dedication. I think the board, everyone that attended, I think we had a good showing. And so, we are, we are Winterville, and Pitt Community is Winterville. So I think all the board members were showing up. Next up, we have some presentations, and if Dr. Lawrence Rouse from Pitt Community College, if you step to the podium.
It's always my pleasure to visit the town council, and thank you for all that you do to support Pitt Community College. And one thing we always let people know is that we are in the town of Winterville.
Yes, sir.
And last Thursday was certainly a great event. The new facility we have is Eddie and Joe Allison Smith Center for Student Advancement, which is a 28,000-square-foot building that allows our students to have a place to congregate, whether it's our women, whether it's our veterans, whether it is our vision students who are coming through high school. And we also have a great meeting space, so if you need some meeting space, we also have that where we had the actual ceremony and the ribbon cutting. So we invite Winterville to know that we're a part of this community, and you have the use of our facilities anytime that you'd like to do that. And that's why we're there. We are a community college. Also, thank you for the proclamation for Community College Month. We have over 1,200 community colleges across the United States. In North Carolina, we have 58, and Pitt Community College is the seventh-largest community college, and we're delighted to continue to serve the people of Pitt County as well as Winterville and Greenville in helping them to be all that they can be. I know that's a military thing. We like the Army, I think, to be all you can be. Well, Pitt Community College helps our citizens to be all that they can be. We will have additional growth there. We have already gotten a new facility that will start this coming fall, which is a welding facility. We have the largest welding program in the state of any community college. We surpass everybody by at least 100 students. And so we have a new welding facility that will come online. We'll start building it in the fall. It will have 99 welding booths. We're gonna try to put one more, make it 100 welding booths in there. But it will be state-of-the-art with robotic welding as well as other features that are needed out here. Every student that comes to welding, the welding program, can find employment. And they're fresh out of the college, they'll make between $57,000 and $87,000, and they can go to work immediately. And sometimes they try to recruit them before they finish, but we encourage them to stay with us so they can have that degree before they go into the workforce. And you have a number of employers right here in Winterville that will put them to work. So we're looking at expanding our output of welders. Right now, we have welding in five of our high schools. So we're also starting early with young folks and teaching them that this craft is something that can be a lifelong experience for them and give them, you know, the ability to move up the economic ladder. That is one of the things that we try to do at Pitt Community College, to make sure that individuals get the skills they need so they can become employable and so that they can have a great career, not just a job, but a career. Similar to these three young men here, we know that they're gonna make great police officers for the town of Winterville, and so we're trying to do that for everybody, to give them those skills that they can move forward. After the welding facility is finished, we're also gonna start another facility that we're trying to get funding for, which will be called the Workforce, excuse me, the Center for Workforce Development and Innovation, which will be a center that will allow, it will be the largest building on our campus at 82,000 square feet, which will allow business and industry to come and set up their line of manufacturing or whatever they do into these enormous bays so that they can train individuals who are currently employed with them. But we can also have the opportunity to recruit new industry, and before they get here, they can set up their line, and we can begin training them before they open their doors. So we've got a lot of plans for Pitt Community College, and we thank you for your support as we move forward and know that there's, that we know that we have a home here in Winterville, and we will continue to grow and to continue to do the things that are needed here to make this a great place. So again, thank you. Are there any questions from anybody?
Well, just to share, we did do a letter support for the building that you were talking about.
Yes.
And looking forward to seeing it come to fruition.
And we certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any question?
We do appreciate everything that Pitt Community College has done for our community. Very few of us have not been out there for a course, whether it was related to our vocations or because of our interests. So we do appreciate everything. I'm, I'm old enough to remember Pitt Tech. Says a lot about our college.
Certainly, and if there's anything that we can do, is there a program, a course that you think you need, then we certainly will, will develop that and offer it for your citizens. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rouse. Next up, we have Mark Hostman, President and CEO, and Kimberly Reeves, Chief Operating Officer of the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plains. And while they are coming, I'd just like to say that last two years, I've had the privilege of being there at the Boys and Girls Club for the Black History Month celebration with the students there when they do their renditions, of drawing famous people. And it's such a joy to be with them and U.S. Celia, and I appreciate y'all extending the invitation to me each year.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I appreciate you coming out this year. I know the kids enjoyed seeing you inside the club and getting their picture taken with the mayor and the story that you got to share with them, so I appreciate that. Madam Manager, thank you. Mayor Proteme, members of council, we appreciate the opportunity to come and, and talk to you a little bit about what we call the movement. So I'm new to the movement. You may recognize my face from my last job, but I got a real fantastic opportunity to come and join this team here and at the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plains, which since we're on a Winterville theme, we're actually, we like to say we're 17 clubs in seven counties, because we've merged over the years and grown. It's a 50-year organization, but my business card says Winterville, so we're headquartered right here in Winterville, and so I'm just gonna shout out that right now for that. Our mission statement, we like to be a mission-driven organization that just speaks right to my heart for everything I've done for my whole life, but our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. And there's really no greater mission to build upon. I can talk about numbers. I have Kimberly here, and Kimberly is actually, she's a 17-year-plus, I think, professional now in the Boys and Girls Club movement. She's from a couple of different places. I think she most recently hails from Atlanta, but she's been with us for a few years, and she's gonna talk a little bit about the programming. But from a numbers standpoint, from just the, the higher level kind of coming down, we shared a couple of things in your packet. And just really, on the, on the first page in the packet, there's a little, little quote in there, and it, over on the right-hand side, and it just talks about why, why the kids like to come here. And in that white box, it talks about, I attend the club every day because I love spending time there. At my club, I always have a safe place to be myself and express myself without judgment. And, you know, we pride ourselves on safety. We, we're always working on that as an organization, and we want, we want those kids to feel safe when they come in. This is their club, a place where they can grow up, get mentored, learn the skills that they're gonna need to be successful in life. We also partner a lot with our community colleges. I think, I don't know if Dr. Rouse, yeah, he's still here. He's been by the club, he's a supporter of us as well, and we just love partnering with our community colleges. There's a youth of the year slip in your packet. I'm gonna ask Kimberly to talk a little bit about youth of the year, but I'm gonna turn to page three there. So that's our June to December mid-year impact report, and we always like to have some numbers. I'm impressed overall at the, the outcome data that the, the club is, we're always about outcome. A lot of people, if they haven't not been inside a club to see what's going on, you would, you would be really shocked. You would come in and you would actually see some organization. You'd see a lot of fun going on. There'd be some noise at times, but there's also, there's, there's homework help happening and different programs, and we're always basing our outcomes based on what we do. So I'll let Kimberly speak just a little bit more about that. Our overall numbers for our club, we do talk about having a lot of different clubs in a lot of different counties, but right here in Pitt County, we have five different clubs, and you can see on that third sheet there, we're serving, right at 1,125 kids are registered members in our club as of this past, this past half a year. And our average, we're, we're serving youth between ages six and 18 years of age. A lot of middle, middle school, elementary school. We're, we're always reaching out to our teens as much as we can and trying to give them a good, fun place to come. 95% of our youth come from a family that is eligible, are eligible for free and reduced meals, and about two-thirds more are coming from single-family homes. I often share the story that I came from a single-family home, so, and I came as a product of a community college, so thank you very much to all of the community colleges. And so there, there are lots of opportunities that a club can do to come around a kid and help them to reach their full potential. I'm gonna ask Kimberly just to talk a little bit about some of the programming that we have inside our clubs.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you all for having us. Any opportunity we have to talk about the kids and the work that we're doing every day, we, we dive right in and jump on it. So the Boys and Girls Club programming can all be linked to three different areas: character and leadership, academic success, and healthy lifestyles. So everything that we do within that four-and-a-half-hour period after school or within our 10 to 10.5 hours in summer camp falls under one of those categories. So tutoring, we're in partnership with Pitt County Schools. We can't do what we do every day without community partnerships. So whether it's Pitt County Schools, Pitt Community College, or even Winterville Police Department, everybody chips in to make sure that our, our kids are getting an outcome-driven club experience. And what we have, there's a formula for that, and it's the kids that need us the most plus an outcome-driven club experience. So that's regular attendance, that's us, you know, putting on our youth development professional hats, and, and just overall programming will yield success in those three core areas. And so we want our kids to have on-time grade progression. We want them to graduate from high school. We have a program called Club Academy, which is high-intensity relationship-centered tutoring, where we wanna make sure that all of our third graders are reading on grade level. And when our young people enroll in that program, they are possibly one to three years behind grade level. And of course, COVID exacerbated that whole dynamic, and so there's a lot of catch-up going on right now. I would ask that if you have just a spirit of volunteerism and you have some extra time and there's some things that you wanna do, come and visit us. Winterville, Mark mentioned that we have over 1,100 students in our program in Pitt County. We're almost 500 of those are right here in Winterville at our, at our flagship location at our Winterville Club, our Jack Minji's location right there on Fire Tower. So come and see us. To the new officers, we are absolutely friends with Winterville Police Department. They visit us often, whether it's just stopping by or us giving a call, and on those days that are difficult, and there will be difficult days, and you need a refresher and a reminder of why you are doing what you're doing, come and spend some time with the kids. We invite you guys to, to do that. So I'm gonna end there. Does anybody have any questions? Anything specifically that they wanna hear about?
I have visited there in the past. The Forest Club has an annual dinner there, and I would say the kids are, if you visit often, they'll be amazed how well mannered they are.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yes, and I also noticed y'all have done some remodeling up at the front.
Mm-hmm.
As far as how you get into the club and all, all of that.
Absolutely.
Can you talk about a little bit of that?
Yes, we remodeled the whole front area, our registration, our front desk. We're always thinking about safety. We have a couple more things to do with our, with our front doors, but we received the funding to do that from you guys, from the city of Winterville through a grant. We are very appreciative of that. Last year, we were able to do some improvements in our teen center, also from a grant from you all. We have a little bit more work to do. I know that you guys see the various school shootings and things like that, and, and those are things that we think about as well. We think about the security of our front doors. We think about, you know, kind of, either our doors are locked or they're unlocked, and making sure that the access to our kids is limited. And so there's a couple of initiatives that we would like to complete there, you know, with everything, and, you know, it costs a few dollars to, to get the, the buzz-in system or the kind of doors that we would like to have, but we're always looking at different ways to make our clubs safer, and so we're definitely appreciative of your partnership for helping us to do that.
I'd like to have a tour sometime.
Absolutely. We, we're open that to, to everybody, to please reach out to us. I can give you a business card, or you can just give us a call and stop by the club. We'd love to give you a tour. If you stop by in the afternoons, you're gonna get a life-changing, kid-led, kid-led tour. They love showing their club off. It's really fun. So stop by.
Thanks.
My two grandchildren. We like to call it organized chaos. If it's quiet.
My two grandchildren were part of the Boys and Girls Club here in Winterville prior to the pandemic, so I do know the value of what you do, and I do value it greatly. I did, I volunteered for a short while there. I'm a former school teacher, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your service.
Yes, and as well as my son also was a member of the Boys and Girls Club as well. So we really appreciate the service, especially me, the homework part of it.
Absolutely, and I just wanna say also that we are gearing up for summer camp. $100 for eight weeks, 10 hours a day, eight weeks, lunch and an afternoon snack, field trips, t-shirt, all-star staff. We spend eight weeks also working on a program that we call Summer Brain Gain. So we wanna make sure that our kids are not experiencing summer learning loss. So we work on STEM, literacy, and mathematics in addition to, we like to call it covert learning. You know, they don't necessarily know they're learning. They're having fun, but they're learning at the same time, and we do that and just have a lot of great summer experiences. $100, eight weeks, 10 hours a day. Yes. You're welcome. You're welcome.
We can appreciate the longstanding partnership. The organization's been around for 50 years, and 30 years headquartered right here in Winterville, so we hope to continue our partnership in the future, and thank you, Town of Winterville, for all the support.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for coming this evening. Next up, we have our public comment section, and we do have three people that have signed up to speak in our public comment section. And before you come up, I need you to read this. The public comment period of 30 minutes provide an opportunity for residents to comment on any item included in the agenda or to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winterville for any item included in the public hearing section of the agenda. Residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites the public comment on the items. No public comment may be made to the council during the meeting, except during the public comment period or as part of the public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter addressed by speaker, may schedule the matter for further consideration at a future council meeting, or may refer the matter to the town staff for disposition. Copies of the town public comment policies are available in the rear of the assembly room. First up, we have Ms. Chantel Hawkins. Step to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
Okay. Good evening, Town Council. My name is Chantel Hawkins. I know we've heard wonderful things about Winterville and where we live. I'm going to adhere to the three minutes because I am following rules. First off, I want to let everyone know that as part of a democratic policy, it's not all pretty. Sometimes there are ruffles and ridges that need to be straightened out. The purpose for my comment tonight is to continue speaking to the way in which the filling, the replacement of the vacancy seat for the town council was handled. In December, I, well, last November 2021, I was a candidate, and in December of this year, I learned of a vacancy seat. I reached out to the mayor and the town manager to let them know that I was available for that seat. I was told that I could apply or... or fill out an application. Via the Rule Number 20, the last candidate, or prior to the next, if there wasn't another election, then the next highest vote, if they were eligible and willing, should have been considered. That rule was deviated from. My question tonight is, who made the decision to deviate from that rule? Was it the town council, or was it the mayor? According to the general statutes, in which I do not have time to read, it says that the town council governs, changes, abolishes, or sets and places rules and/or deviations from. The last meeting, the mayor said he thought that because the next highest vote was given to Councilman Rice, that he thought that there shouldn't been another, a next highest vote, which I think that the board should go back and review. Which, as I shared, that I am not upset that Dr. Harrell was selected. I think if it's not me, then I am proud that she was there. But was the process done in the right order? There was two councilpersons who was in objection to this happening, Councilwoman Robertson and Councilwoman Moy. Were they given the opportunity to speak to what should have been done next? In February, I was told, well, in January, they said they would redo or review the rules that were deviated from, because there was no ordinance. And then in last month, they were supposed to do it. And then this month, they were supposed to do it. Via me reading the agenda, it has not been done. I scanned the room when I looked in, and I did not see a broom. But I will not let this get swept under the rug. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Southern Bank.
Mayor, while they're coming to me, I'd like to say a quick question.
Yes.
This matter first came to my attention.
A little better? There we go. Thank you. This matter first came to my attention at the town Christmas party, when Councilwoman Robertson spoke to me about a town citizen who was having some trouble, legal trouble, banking trouble, and asked if I would look into it. Was glad to do so. I spoke with the lady. She is a town citizen. And she was, also had friends and church members that were working with her. So we, I met with them a couple times and found that she lives in a home that the town, quite a few years ago, helped to purchase that home. So it was purchased with town or public funds. Also found that she did what a lot of us do. She got an equity line, and she had taken some of the equity out of her home. She had also made every payment timely, so she was not late on one payment. But at the end of the 15 years, which most equity lines are 15 years, there was a balance due. Her bank was not, certainly not Southern, not a local bank, I think it was a bank from another state. And they were not willing to renew or extend her loan. So she was in sort of a jam. So again, meeting with her and her friends and church members, I realized what she needed was a good bank, somebody that would be willing to look at her situation and be willing to help her. And quite frankly, the first bank that came to mind was Southern Bank. So I've known Scott, and I've known Bobby for many, many years. And I just want to say that they stepped up and did what needed to be done to help this individual. So I won't, not steal any more thunder, I won't turn it over to Scott. But I didn't want to let you know that myself was involved in this to move it down the road.
Thank you, King. Thank you for making us aware of this opportunity to take care of a citizen of Winterville. My name is Scott Webster. I'm a commercial lender here in Pitt County, and serve the county. But as we were made aware of this situation, we knew that this citizen was under some distress. We knew that the lender was moving rapidly, and we needed to help. And it did take some extra effort to do it. Upon understanding the situation, we brought in the key players that would help us. This is Mr. Bobby Boykin. He offices in Winterville. Since we're talking about offices in Winterville tonight, you need to know that. And I've worked with many lenders, mortgage lenders, over my years in banking at different institutions. Pitt County has some very good ones. But I will clearly tell you, in terms of customer service, and knowledge, and commitment to follow through, this gentleman with over 30 years in the mortgage industry is the very best. And I've seen some good ones. We are a small community bank. There aren't many of us left. You may know that. Community banks are becoming rare. When you hit the $10 billion asset threshold, you step into another category. We're a size of about $5 billion in asset size. We have a loan portfolio across our bank of about $2.8 billion. We've got a deposit base of about 4.2. And we're unique. We're very, very safe and sound as an institution. When you look at loan-to-deposit ratios, Southern Bank sits at about 68%. Most of our competitors are 100%. So when you hear about folks needing to go to the Fed to borrow money, we don't position ourselves that way. We're a very conservative bank. You find us east of I-95, with a small cluster of branches in the Tidewater, and one branch in Raleigh. But you're gonna find us in small communities. So in Pitt County, we're in Aden, we're in Farmville, we're in Winterville, and we're in Greenville. And we're committed to this county. We want to help citizens. We want to see if we can help them prosper and do well. And that's what we did in this case. And we're very grateful for that opportunity. This required a lot of time. And that's where an institution like ours, being small, is able to slow down, look at it from different angles, involve the right players, and help. So we're grateful to all of you for giving us this opportunity. Thank you. Bobby?
Okay. Well, thank you all. Thank you again, Southern Bank. And thank you, King, for assisting. And thank you, Ms. Robertson, for bringing it to King's attention. Ms. Robertson?
I want to say a personal thank you to you for helping in that situation. Can't talk very much about it, because, you know, everybody thinks I'm tough, but it brings tears to my eyes. When it was first presented to me, I didn't know what to do. And I thank King for his assistance and your assistance. It gets into my religious beliefs, but thank you, thank you, thank you, for everything you've done. And she is very appreciative. We've had a little crying session at church, but we're glad that she was able to stay in there on. And we're glad that you were able to facilitate that. Thank you.
Anybody?
If I may, Mayor, members of the council, gentlemen. My father retired from Southern Bank in Mount Olive many years ago. He has since passed away, but he would have been proud, because that was the reason that he loved working for Southern, and he would have thought that that's what should be the case. So thank you.
A couple, probably about a month ago, I attended a little small meeting they had at Pitt Community College for small business. My intention was to just step in for a few minutes, and, you know, and check and see what it was all about. And I had to leave because I had another appointment. But it got so interesting, and I stayed there for the whole time. And I just wanted to know that what I learned, I can share it with some of my friends and my neighbors, and with my family. I just want to say thank you. Get a chance, anyone here, get a chance to have something like that again. I value to try to attend, and you will learn a lot from the staff that they have there. Again, I say thank you.
I'd like to say Charlotte, here in Winterville, does a great job. Me? Anyone else? Next person up is Ms. Ludi Moore. She will be talking to us.
I'd also like to say I love Southern Bank. I left another bank for Southern Bank. I love them. My name is Ludi Moore. I live at 161 Vernon White Road, here in Winterville. And I just want to, as you can see up there, there's a rendering of a mural that I am interested in putting on the side of the Dollar General, that I happen to own the property. It's the Dollar General at the corner of Main and Mill Streets, here in Winterville. I, along with other members of our community, was involved with a Zoom call meeting several months ago with Holly Garrett from the Pitt County Arts Council. In that meeting, some of us, we discussed beautification projects for Winterville, and the subject of murals came up. And there were several people that were very interested in it. I started thinking about the Dollar General building, and that big blank wall facing the east, which happens to be a pretty big focal point for our downtown. And I must say, I think the Dollar General building is sort of ugly, so I was thinking of some way to beautify it. So in developing this plan in my head, I first got in touch with Dollar General corporate headquarters to get their permission. They informed me that they had no one, that no one had ever asked about doing this, but seemed to like the idea, pending approval of a rendering. I then called Stephen Penn here, and he thought the idea was great as well. I have commissioned Roger Cammerer, who was the Pitt County historian, to do this mural, if approved. I just received this rendering this afternoon. That was my rush to get here tonight. Roger is ready to start the project right away, if approved by this town board and by Dollar General. As you can see, this mural will tell the story of the history of Winterville. If you look close, you will see that the center focal point is of the train depot that we have down there by W.H. Robinson School, which is probably the number-one reason the town of Winterville was incorporated. Winterville was built around the railroad. You will also see the electric light bulb up there top left, which signifies Winterville being the first community in Pitt County to have electric lights, which was in the late 1800s. Then there's the A.G. Cox House at the top. Then A.G. Cox, as the founder of Winterville, the old Winterville High School, that, with the Winterville, the old Winterville High School, I think, was the first high school in Pitt County. And a lot of students came from other states. Then they, we're gonna have a little cardinal, which is a state bird, to give it color, tobacco leaf, the cotton cox planter, and a pig signifying our love of barbecue, and the old W.H. Robinson three-room schoolhouse. Of course, this is just a rough draft, and, but when it is finished, the colors will be bright and cheery. I hope you will consider approving this project, and my hope that when it is finished, if approved, other businesses will want to do something similar with their buildings. Thank you for your time, and for all you do for our town.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anybody have any comments?
The picture of Robinson School, is this one that someone had as far as history?
Jesse Riggs, I think, has a picture of it.
Okay. I've never seen, that's why I asked. I've never seen that building.
Ms. Moore, could you come back to the podium, please?
Jesse Riggs has a lot of these pictures, who is our town historian. But then Roger Cammerer also had some of these drawings as well.
I just have never seen that building before, but I know it was a building across the street.
Uh-huh.
And you said that the barbecue was, what, it's Parker's?
No, it's, it just...
I'm sorry. I'm not being funny, but I did, I'm...
Just represents our eastern North Carolina, I guess, and how we, our love of barbecue.
Just barbecue.
In general.
In general, in the east, part of North Carolina.
And then the tobacco leaf, and then, I was saying, the cardinal would be a bright red, just a real big shock of color. Of course, it'll all be in color. But then he's got ribbons, kind of connecting everything together, as you can see all that. So, anyway, just trying to depict the history of Winterville.
Counsel, she would like to have an approval.
Tonight?
Tonight.
If, I mean, if possible, simply because I think he's ready to get on with it.
Because of weather, too.
Yes. So it's not so hot.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second. We endorse it.
All right. We have a motion made by Councilman Moy, second by Councilman Tony Moore. Any other discussion before we take the vote by town manager?
It's a good idea.
If not?
Can you see a flag?
Thank you.
Well, call for the vote.
Okay, start with Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Ludi.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate.
I understand Mr. Cox supplied the land for both schools, correct?
Do what?
Mr. Cox supplied the land for both schools. He donated it.
Yes. Oh, yes. I think, uh-huh, you're right.
He did.
Sue DeRavere, in one.
Okay. And also to, just to piggyback on Ms. Hawkins' comment there, the council supposed to let the town manager and the attorney know what is their request for Rule 20. We're getting down to it, guys. We haven't had any emails sent to the manager. Or, King, have you had any emails?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So y'all know what you're supposed to do, if you want to see a change, or whatever, you need to send them the emails, okay? Let's try to get this done by the end of the month, okay? Everybody in agreement with that? Send an email, yay or nay, or whatever you want done, to either the town manager or the town attorney, okay?
If I may ask, if you would send it to both of us, that would be great, just to make sure we both have.
Thank you, Terry. That would be the correct thing to do. All right, next up is the consent agenda.
Is there approval?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Tony Moore, second by Councilwoman Robertson, to approve the consent agenda. Call for the vote.
Okay, start with Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Motion carried. Yeah, we can answer this.
Under, mayor, under new business?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to put in all, one, two, and three resolutions for approval?
I think because, and Terry may, Terry's gonna speak to that, because I asked that in the work session, could we do that? But she can explain why we can't do that.
Councilman Moore, under normal circumstances, we say yes, but they're all slightly different. And when we submit them, we just didn't want any confusion amongst the specific resolutions. So if you don't mind individually approving them, that'd be great.
But we were thinking on the same line.
Absolutely.
Can you believe that?
Good evening, Anthony.
Yeah, good evening, Anthony.
Good evening, good evening. We'll start with, if I may, the resolution authorizing the application for grant funding for DWI Stormwater Program. This is simply a grant application. There's no guarantee that we'll receive the funds. This grant will cover a portion of the engineering costs associated with the Railroad Street and Noble Canal Project. As it stated, the grant is through the North Carolina Division of Water Quality, Stormwater Infrastructure Division. It covers up to $400,000 potentially, to help and assist with planning and designing of the project. The town applied for the same application in the fall, but was turned down. However, as y'all know, we've received two other grants through that process. And so this is cleaning up some loose ends that were associated with the CIP, which will be addressed later tonight, as well as a resolution that was on the consent agenda for our Stormwater Enterprise Fund. We are seeking adoption of the grant application.
Okay. So...
It's a resolution.
Resolution, resolution authorizing the application for grant funding from the DWI Stormwater Program.
Is there approval?
Got a motion made by Councilman Moy, Moore, second by Councilwoman Robertson, for approval of the... of the resolution authorizing the application for grant funding for DWI. We'll call for the vote.
Okay, Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Motion carry, unanimously. Next, resolution, Anthony.
Okay, so now we have before you another grant. This one is actually a grant loan application. So the, the town has several major water projects that have to be addressed. In order to do that, we're seeking funding through NCDQ, and part of that is, this resolution is applying for a loan and $500,000 in debt forgiveness. They don't call it a grant, even though they're, you know, historically have, you know, contributed $500,000 to a project, they just call it debt forgiveness, and so that's what, the terminology we have to use. But the three, the three major projects, I feel, associated with this is a two-inch water line replacement project, which is iron lines that need to be removed, and 10- and 12-inch water main that have asbestos concrete. So those need to be removed from the water system as well. And so this project is included in the CIP that is included in your agenda packet. Estimated cost for all three of those, $2,700,000. With the debt forgiveness, that drops it to $2,200,000. And so the staff is asking for adoption of the resolution.
Send move.
Second.
Okay, got a motion made by Councilman Moy, Moy, and second by Councilman Rice for the resolution authorizing the application for grant funding from DWI for drinking water program and line replacement. Call for the question, the vote.
Okay, starting with Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Motion carry, unanimously.
Okay, we also have, the next item, excuse me, is another resolution for DWI Drinking Water Program, and this is for line expansion. And so this one covers three major projects, the South Brook Subdivision, which is the big PUD 600 home development that's gonna be on the south side of town. We need to get water, install a water main to get to the property, and so we're looking at a 10-inch water main that would run from Ultaire down Lory Ellis and over to the subdivision. And so that project is roughly $2 million. We're also looking at a, the Ultaire Road Widening Project, that is also costs associated with moving our water lines and any betterments that the town is interested in. The cost of that project is roughly $981,000. And then the town is also looking at a new interconnect with Greenwood Utilities on the Ready Branch Road area of town, and that project is $1,216,500. And so all combined, we're looking at $4,197,000. And I will say that the NC DOT project, as well as the GUC project, are potential to work out negotiations there, so those numbers could change, but we know that these are the estimates that have been given to us at this time, and so we wanted to move forward with the loan application, because it can take a couple of years. I will say these loan and grant applications normally low interest historically, and most recently, they've been 0%. So basically, we're just borrowing money from the state at no interest. However, they, you know, looking further back before interest rates bottomed out, they were around 2%, somewhere in that magnitude. So very low, very low interest loans. So looking for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Moy, second by Councilwoman Robertson. Any discussion? Not any, call for the vote.
Okay, start with Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Motion carry, unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, you still on the tab for the water fund capital?
Last item, I'm trying to move through them quickly for you. But, yeah, so last item, Water Capital Improvements Program. It's a five-year program. We, we are essentially a little bit behind on our capital improvements program, so we're looking at gradually updating those. This is the first round, the first iteration. Reason this one's first is because we have some grant applications we want to apply for. And so, you know, one, one works with the other, and so we're gonna get them all together, but you'll see these roll through, and now that Cliff's here, we're gonna, you know, start doing these on a more regular basis, and we'll do one for water, one for sewer, one for stormwater, and then they'll be, try to be consolidated, and then an annual update to get solid numbers in the CI, our capital improvement program. Ideally, these programs roll into your budgetary process, and so as we, we work on our budgets on an annual basis, this is the foundation for what we try to achieve and what's next, and helps us prioritize, helps the staff prioritize, helps the council prioritize, and, and so gives us guidance as we move down the road. Roughly, there are 21 projects in this CIP. I won't go through all 21, but they are there for you to review. There's a cost estimates that were recently updated through the Wooton Company, and they are our consulting engineer. And as you can imagine, costs have gone up, so there are a lot of projects that were, you know, relatively expensive a, a couple of years ago are now expensive. The total cost of our CIP is currently $17,372,000. And unfortunately, of the 17 million, $12,822,000 needs to be addressed within the next five years. So a lot of these projects are state and federal mandated projects, not decisions that, that the town has to do, but we have to start planning for them, we have to start getting ready for them, and try to manage these costs as best we can. This is a...
Say it.
Got a motion made by Councilwoman Robertson, second by Councilman Moy. Any discussion? If not, call for the question.
Start with Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carry.
Mayor, I'd just like to, I'm sorry, I'd just like to thank staff, because as you can see, where they've been spending a lot of their time digging down in these required documents and applying for monies to help us get these projects done, so I do appreciate their hard work, because it's a lot to put together.
We appreciate it, staff. Next up, Terry, are you gonna handle the library board appointment?
I will, but I would ask for Councilwoman Robertson's assistance. Councilwoman Robertson, as you all know, is our current board member for Winterville, and I believe her term is coming to an end shortly, the end of May. And Ms. Robertson's really wanting to make sure that we have another Winterville council member, elected official, that takes the place on that board. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Robertson.
The county commissioners, you're limited in the number of terms you can serve on the board, and I've reached that point. I've been on the board six years. I think I served two years just attending the meetings to represent Winterville's opinions of Winterville's, Winterfield's participation in the Shepherd Library system. It is a good board to serve on, and we know the impact of libraries and books. We know the impact of our library here in town, and it is part of the Shepherd system. So we do need to keep someone up there. They are, they have gone before the county commissioners, and Mark, you will see this pretty soon. I think you've already seen it, someone asking for a permanent position for Winterville and Bethel, because they're the two. But those two members on it may be non-voting. Right now, some decided whether they'll be voting or non-voting, but...
How often do they meet?
Once every two months or three months. They don't meet a lot, and they're not long meetings either, and they're right at Shepherd, usually.
Okay, y'all heard?
Mr. Moy, are you interested?
All right. Yes, we hit out a meeting the other day.
Make a motion, we appoint. Boy?
Second.
Okay.
All right, got a motion to appoint Councilman Johnny Moore. Motion made by Tony Moore, second by Dr. Harrell. Before we move forward to vote, do you accept it, first of all?
Yes.
All right, so now we move for the question.
Start with Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Johnny.
I'll let you know six years.
All right.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Next up is the community room rental deposits and rates.
So, as you all know, the town has historically rented out the community room facility, which is in the Public Safety Building, to members of the community and even members out of town for events that they may want to hold. During the COVID pandemic, we suspended rentals for obvious reasons. We have recently started re-renting again the community room, and in looking, discussing with staff, and trying to ascertain what deposit and rental amounts need to be in 2023, I have made the following recommendations for council's consideration and discussion. Currently, we charge a refundable deposit, and that is $100. I am proposing that we increase that to $200. We have an in-town and an out-of-town rate. In-town rate is currently $125 per day, and I am proposing an increase to $225 per day. We have an out-of-town rental rate currently of $200 per day, and I am proposing an increase to $300 per day, but I certainly put that forward for council's discussion.
Make a motion to approve your recommendations.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilman Tony Moore, second by Dr. Brandon Harrell, to increase the rates from 125 to 225, from 200 to 300, and from 100 to 200. Correct. Any discussion before we take the vote?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I see that the increase for in-town went from, the recommendation is from 125 to 225?
Correct.
Okay. And it might be my calculation, my calculations say that's, that's a 75% increase, okay? For the out-of-town, from 200 to $300, to me, that is only just 50% increase. I, I'm just talking about numbers.
Sure, and I, I just went, I'm sorry, I just went mathematically by a $100 increase per rate section. I, I didn't calculate percentages, because sometimes I don't think that that tells the whole picture, so.
Yes, okay, okay. Well, to me, it will be, the right thing to do is, if, if we're gonna have an increase, and you're gonna have an increase across the board, I think the increase should be equal or greater, especially for the out-of-town, because the tight spell here in our town should deserve a break, better than the out-of-town. Even though the numbers might be the same, but if you look at the percentage itself, it's different from 75% to 50%, if you look at it. Please help me out with my, with my numbers. Look, I'm not a mathematician, I, you know, but I'm, I can count a little bit. And, you're working on it right now, thank you.
I think you're close enough. I think you're close enough. Again, when I proposed the increases, it were, it was a $100 increase per category.
Right, yes.
So, I mean, certainly if council would like to increase the increase amount for out-of-town, we certainly don't oppose that.
Well, we have a motion on the table.
There's a motion on the floor, yes.
All right, motion on the floor. So we'll go through one with the motion, and call for the vote, Terry.
Okay, start with Councilwoman Harrell.
I'm sorry, tell me what the...
The motion is to recommend 100 laws to, we're going from 100 to 200, from 125 to 225, and 200 to 300.
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
No.
Okay, Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
I'm a little between the two. I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Councilman Moore.
Yes.
Motion carry, 3-2, to increase it from 100 to 200, and 125 to 225, to 200 to 300. Motion carry.
We will, if council is in agreement, we will start that from any rentals that come in from tomorrow forward, immediately.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is...
I got a question about that. How do you tell, I know the weekend, you got Friday, Saturday, Sunday. How do you, how can you distinguish between Saturdays rental, if this, everything's done, to Sundays? I know we're saying that the police department inspects, but you're saying that even though they inspect, that there's been damage?
Yes, the police department, and I would ask, Chief, we'll like to jump in if I get this incorrect, but the police department performs a pre-event inspection with the renter, and then a post-event inspection with the renter, and we've not had a situation where there was so much damage, we couldn't rent the room. Now, we did have, we have had more than one instance where the toilets, one or more, was rendered inoperable, and we would have to put an out-of-order sign on that, so all of the toilets may or may not be available for the next event's use. I have had to have our cleaning people come in and clean up after the people that, if we have a Saturday, Sunday, next event, if in fact the cleaning wasn't up to par. So we try to jump in and, and make it ready to go if we have one the next day, and, but there have been a few instances where we had to do more than we should have to, to make that happen. Did I miss anything, Chief? Thank you.
Next is a time limit for people speaking during the public hearing.
I think we, most of us, if not all of us, had some discussion after recent public hearings, that there may be a need to impose the same three limit, the three-minute time limit for people speaking during town public hearings. Consulted with town attorney, I believe the statute allows us to do that, and Chief, I would jump in.
Yes, yeah, I'll jump in real quickly. 160A-81, conduct of public hearings, forgive me, I'll read real quick. It says, "A council may adopt reasonable rules to govern the conduct of public hearings, including but not limited to, and number one is fixing the maximum time allotted to meet speakers." So that clearly was within the authority given to the town for the general statute, that you can set a max time.
We have a motion, wait, three minutes.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Moy, second by Dr. Harrell. Any discussion? No discussion, call for the vote.
Okay, Councilwoman Harrell.
Yes.
Mayor Per Tim Moy.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Yes.
And Councilman Moore.
Yes.
If all are in agreement, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am. I got ahead of myself.
Motion carry, 5-5-0.
I was gonna say, if everyone is in agreement, we will start with next month, May 8's public hearings. We will have four, so...
And we meet at 6:00?
We do. We do.
After 100 and some years, we meet at 6:00.
I think I speak on behalf of staff when we say thank you for that.
Will we print that on our agenda, like we do our restrictions for public comment?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next up is other agenda items for future budgetary discussions. I think Mr. Moore.
Yes, as I was talking to, I saw one of our residents of Winterville, and I noticed that these are items that I saw that needed improvement, that make us look like a better town. We've had lots of, I would say, talk about monies to be spent. Talk about monies to be spent, but we need to pave around a recreation park outside the fields, the walk-in trail definitely needs some work. Library steps look terrible. New lighting, spending another block each direction. And then the bricks, crosswalks, clean up behind the rest of the people. I tried to walk down Main Street to my office in Cooper Street, and I see, there's no place to walk. There's no walking, you have to go into the road to walk down Main and Cooper Street. Might get hit one morning. I walk back and forth, take my miles in. I do five miles a day, back and forth. So, just for conversation later on, no discussion, if you don't want to. That's it, that's my opinions.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore and I have discussed, and I'll make sure that these get enveloped in our budgetary discussions.
Right, that's all.
All right, thank you, thank you. Any other discussion?
Will graveyard be part of our budget name?
Yes, ma'am, and I hope to have a pretty close update as to what's left to be done out there.
Anybody else? Any further budgetary? All right. So, I covered it, items for further agenda and further work sessions.
I had initially proposed May 8th, prior to our regular board meeting, but I think we had some conflicts. So, at our agenda review meeting, the date of May 15th, 2023, at 5:00 PM, was scheduled for the town manager's performance review meeting. I'll be sending out the same instrument that council has used historically, and King will be working with you all and getting that handled. So, just wanted to call everybody's attention to that. Yes, sir.
Okay, quarter of reports from our department heads. Who wants to go first?
The staff has been waiting all day to do this.
Evening, mayors and council. I'll just hit the highlights for the plan and then economic development. We are, in this first quarter, 24 new single-family homes have been developed. This is slightly ahead of the past three years, so we're looking good with some residential development here in town. We have some new commercial on the way as well. Staff has recently reviewed and approved the site development plans for a grocery store anchored development off of Beacon Drive. The signs show a Lowe's Foods for that one. There will be 17 attached other units for lease as well. Two new mini-stores facilities are currently under development, both on Reedy Branch Road. One of them closer to our cemetery, the other one is on the corner of Highway 11 and Reedy Branch. We just received a preliminary plat for Mill Street Towns, which is 120-unit town home development proposal, just south of the 11 at Main townhomes that you are seeing constructed right now. And finally, Brookstones Section 2, which is off of Church Street Extension, has submitted their second phase for construction review for 49 lots. So, we're certainly moving along and some positive growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Steve, got a question?
Sir?
With all of that development that we have, all growth, how are we looking with the transformers? Because I know we had an issue with, do we have any concern or issue?
That could be answered only by the next person.
I think we have an electric department.
Electrical person.
Okay.
Good question.
And the reason why I asked him that, because everything has been approved.
Step on down, Mr. Electrical.
Good evening, how are y'all doing? I'm filling in for Robert, he's out of town. First item was Brookfield, we've been working out of there, it's like 98% complete with all transformers out there. We're still waiting on a few items to come in, some elbows to finish that out. It's like 98% complete. We started some building in Copper Creek, I think they've issued like six permits out there. 11 at Main, there's two buildings out there that are, or have been inspected and they're hot. I think they're looking at two to three additional units coming online this month. Material delivery transformers is still an issue. I think we've got in maybe like 15 transformers in all in the last couple of months, and I can't say exactly when the next ones are going to be coming in, but I'm thinking, I think Robert said somewhere, maybe six to eight weeks, another shipment, but not the large shipment that they ordered.
Ron? I just wanted to verify with you. It would be fair to say that, as far as you know, and you've been in our meetings, we try to let new development know right out of the gate about the transformer delay. And so, these developers are being told straight up, immediately about the delay, and we try to keep them informed through Stephen's office and through the electric department's office throughout the whole time, kind of the status of where things are as best we know it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, we have been upfront with them about transformers and infrastructure stuff coming in. We started on the Tall Road widening project with the engineers. I think they're almost getting close to that, so the state can acquire the right-of-ways for that. And currently working on the renewable credits with Carolina Power and Partners. I think that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. Mills?
Yes, how many transformer do we immediately need at this time?
I mean, do we need right now?
Yeah, immediately, yes.
The only places that we have right now that, we're pretty caught up right now. I think we've got a couple more going out at 11 at Main, for a couple more buildings, and as they progress, you know, we'll still be needing a few more out there. I think it'll probably take 10 overall to finish the section they're working on right now.
Thank you, Ron.
But I think we're caught up right now. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anthony?
It's been a while.
It's been, it's been a hot minute. Just to kind of elaborate on that a little bit, I think staff has worked with some of the suppliers and vendors to not necessarily have to wait for transformers to come in, you know, all at one time. So, we worked diligently to try to get them to send partial loads, and that's helped out with some of the, so we're certainly better off than where we are with the transformers than where we've been in the past, and they're starting to trickle in a little bit. But, you know, we originally placed some of those ores over a year ago, after, during some of our budget conversations, and so it has taken a long time, but I think currently, and Ron can attest that we're, nobody's waiting on any transformers at the current moment, so.
Is the cost, have the cost still gone up anymore, or it's still about the same than it was when we?
Oh, they're still going, I mean, everything is, nothing's really gotten any better, except for people know to plan a year out ahead, as far as cost and time constraints. So, some of the other projects, I know many of you may have seen the work going on at Aene Street, the sidewalk project is nearly complete. There's some striping that needs to be put down, and a little bit of grading, and it's been graded and seeded, so really, striping is the biggest part of that. We're waiting on DOT, you might see some water standing down there, but we're waiting DOT to come clean out one of their drains, so that the water flows better. Following up with Ron a little bit, with NC DOT, we met with them, we had a call to meeting with NC DOT to talk about the old Tall Road widening project. There's a lot going on with that project, a lot of moving parts, and we're certainly looking to try to get more information to the council, as well as, you know, getting NC DOT to possibly come and present to the council with regard to what the project, what's going on with the project, status updates, and things of that nature. Sewer, new sewer outfall canal is being built in conjunction with ACES for Autism and Christ Covenant, this was an agreement that has been in the works for many years. We, town partnered with them to upsize that project, so that we could allow for more capacity, and so while they were there working, the town upsized that project, so it would work in our favor a little bit. We, I did apply for an AMI grant for electric meters, so that through Electric Cities is about $1.2 million grant, and so hopefully we'll, us and I would say about 10 other municipalities in the state went in on that grant application, and so hopefully we'll get some good news from that. And we have received design and drawings for the 2023 paving project, which will be mostly railroad street area. And so, once staff has a chance to review that, we'll get it back to the engineers, with any comments we have, and then looking to go out for bid and get that project moving. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Anthony.
I've been told by the owners of property, the court, the court has not developed property, I think it takes five acres of U2 of land, about to negotiate the price at this time. It's a lot.
It is a lot. And one of the things that was news to us is that they had historically told us there was going to be a roundabout, and that's now changed to a signal. So, there's some other changes, and so I think it would be good to hear from them as to what exactly those changes are, I don't want to represent them. But, but there are some changes from the beginning of the project to what was presented to the public, and so we feel like it's right to get them to explain any updates that they may have had throughout the course of the, you know, the project got pushed back several years because of funding, should have been done, we should probably already be under construction at this moment, so if not wrapping it up, but, so here we are.
Oh, I was going to say, and we've talked internally a lot about what a mess that's going to be, you know, while it's constructed, so the more information we have, obviously, all along, the better.
I don't know whether it's the right place, wrong place, but thank you for your work with our citizens and getting those U cards. As much as I've called you, I've been called twice as much.
I'm sure.
But I do appreciate getting that straightened out for them, because we, you know, we, it was, we couldn't help having to raise the rates, and that was something that we had to do, and, but it, you know, allowed them the chance to kind of have a little extra money to pay the extra that we were charging them, and everyone, you know, I think they greatly appreciate that. So, thanks to you, Terry, and everybody else that had to do something with it.
I have to give thanks to finance, they really dug in and worked on that, so they get the credit.
Yes, I appreciate it so much, and I know our citizens do too.
Yeah, we're glad to get that worked out and make it available. It's certainly been a little bit of a cumbersome process, but we worked through it and stayed true to it and finished it, so.
And Anthony, Anthony has taught me a lot about, you know, the nuances of that kind of program, so.
Yeah.
Thank you too, also to Ms. Jessica sitting over there, you and your staff. It's your show now to run, so it goes to you, also to you, Anthony, but it's coming the time that we're going to have to separate.
Any other questions?
That's it. All right, thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Anthony for covering everything I do, so I appreciate it. Some of y'all may remember that back in August 31st of 2022, the letter came in to council about 2544 Lynn Loop, a gentleman, his wife's in a wheelchair, was having trouble getting her out of the driveway. He recently came in, paid his bill, and made a note on his bill to Ms. Amy about that we promised to fix his driveway. So, we have acquired bids for that, and we are getting ready to move forward with fixing that, just so y'all know. It does take time to get all that moving. We're going to tie that to a stormwater project, which will also include some stormwater problems on Hill Crest out that way, where we have some small diameter pipes, we can upgrade all at the same time. Street sweeping's been going a lot more than it had been since, you know, we were low on staff, we've got several guys trained now, so they can keep it going. We try to keep it going five days a week, a lot of times it's four, but as much as we can. Mr. Howard, our construction inspector, has slammed, along with Evan and his guys, everything going on. You can see by the sunburn on my face, we were at Main Street, 11 at Main all day today, trying to look around out there.
Better stop wearing that hat.
Well, I usually do, but I try to be presentable and get my hair done for the night. But we have, like Ron and MZ, Brookfield, just, he buttoned up Copper Creek, they're going to start building out there, ACES for Autism, the sewer outfall project they're doing between ACES and Christ Covenant, just, you name it, that's going on. We've jumped back on mowing, you'll see us trying to get everything tidied up every week. We are still trying to do some of that in-house, but talk to Precision, they're going to pick up some of that slack, so that's just a little of what we got going on, Anthony touched on most of it, so I've been, we've been working with him a lot, so. He's doing most of the work.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
Cliff and Terry, are we going to try to utilize any summer help?
We will be more than happy to review applications if people would like to send some summer helpers our way. We have really not received many applications. And in total candor, some of the ones we've received over the last couple of years through, before the pandemic, once they found out what the work was going to entail, they no longer wanted to perform that kind of work, so.
Regeneration.
We will certainly be willing to consider any of that.
Well, maybe, maybe this is a two-fold question for Chief and Cliff. If someone has community service, could we, I don't know, could we utilize them?
I do think, we have utilized community service workers, I do think there's some limitations on what they can do, and the kind of equipment that they can use. I don't recall the specifics.
I've been doing service for the courts for 45 years, never questioned what they did.
We will double check.
Not construction work, never any questions. In fact, I had two or three recently.
I was just wondering, I mean, if someone came and approached, you know, about doing community, you know?
We have used them, and sometimes, again, we've had some that did great, and then we've had others that, once they found out the kind of work they would be doing for the day, were no longer interested in performing that work.
All right, thank you. Hold on, Cliff?
Yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mr. Moore?
I was just going to make a comment about, earlier at the church, we rent, we rent our church rich and building for $100 a Sunday. Heels included, it's how we charge. And I'm in charge of renting the facility, anybody wants to rent the facility, I give them a deal better than the town's deal.
They're not interested.
Can we pass that around?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay.
Johnny, Johnny?
To Cliff, back in October of last year, residents in Lower Meadows Drive requested for a speed bumps, and I think that we supposed have checked into it. One of the members came to our last meeting, but it was very busy, it was very long, so they had a situation, they had to leave. They made mention to me again about it, I wanted to check and see what the status is on it. He lives, I can give you his address, it's 2856 Lower Meadows Drive, his name is Tony Green.
In our recreation board?
Mr. Moy, if I remember correctly, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, there was something about y'all had acquired a new piece of equipment that digitally reads speed, y'all going to stick in there, did that happen? I know we touched on that, but we hadn't, you know, I think we can work together and get something done in there.
Yes, because I think they have already, they had a petition, they have some, already turned that in, I think just about a high percentage of the resident in the area signed the petition. The request is for ACES for speed bumps.
We will definitely go back and look at which meeting that occurred, and we'll go back and look at the petition, and we'll get staff back in, thank you, in the loop on looking into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers, just a few updates for finance. Staff is working on the next fiscal year's budget, and we'll have our next budget meeting May 1st, and we'll discuss the revenue predictions for next year. Also a reminder that the power cost adjustment was reduced from 5 cents per kilowatt down to 2 and 1/2 cents. That will be reflected on the bills that'll go out at the end of April, that'll, the usage for those- That'll, the usage for those bills will be around the middle of March through the middle of April. And also a reminder that Greenlamp is still accepting the applications for the one-time $85 assistance program. We still have the representative at the town hall on Tuesdays from 10 to 3:00. And he's supposed to be here through the end of April. And so far, we've had around 67 applications approved. That's all I got.
Yes. Do we have that into our newsletter about the decrease coming out?
I think so. I am trying to work on the newsletter, so it is scheduled to be in the newsletter. I'm getting my workout this month and some things I don't normally handle, so yes, sir.
Yes, and because I'm quite sure just by here, all of us on the board have received calls.
Yes.
About this and this writing will be good news, but you know, by us telling them it's good news, but by they see it in writing. It will be even better.
You might hire him.
Say why not?
I said I would love to, we do a monthly newsletter. I said I would love to use my stamp, but you might hire him.
Oh, I'll hire you, Mr. Moore.
And thank you too, Jessica, for your work with that U card situation. Everybody up here works together so much, so when you thank somebody, you just have to thank everybody.
Everybody.
Because everybody has a hand in making our town what it is. And I appreciate what you've done too, especially keeping finances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Counting the days down.
Don't say that.
I've been counting them too much.
Not counting them too much. Good evening again, Mayor and council. As the town manager mentioned, our community room rentals, I don't know how everybody found out that we're renting again, but they know and we're probably fielding at least one or two requests per day and they're paying.
Chief, will you just remind everyone who's handling that, just so?
I will. Officer Gomez is the head honcho. Now, if she's gone, we can still take applications and make it happen, but she, she has transitioned and I was going to cover that in, that happened this quarter. She trans- just transitioned into the administrative role in our office because of some childcare issues that 12-hour shifts and constantly going back and forth from nights to days wasn't working out. But it actually benefits us having a sworn officer in that position. There's many capabilities that she has that a civilian doesn't have, fingerprinting, answering questions that an officer.
She's very pleasant.
She is.
She's also sharp on that computer, too.
She is.
Yep.
She's been to DCI school and notary school already, so she's spun up on a lot of things. Our recruiting is constant. As you can see, we, we've brought in three brand-new officers and we, we've got room for three more. And, you know, people move around from agency to agency in different life events or their wife gets a better job than they do, so they have to leave. So we're, we're trying to stay on top of that so we don't, our service to the community doesn't falter. We're working hard with Public Works. They're, they're having a big problem with citizens putting debris in the roadway instead of on the curb, which then gets into the storm drain. So we are assisting in education and a little nudge to not do that. Cliff and I have been in discussions about next steps if that does not work. A civil penalty versus a sending people to court for that. So we've been talking about that and we'll probably be talking to the town manager about that because it's not, as, as spring continues to evolve into summer, it gets more and more and more as people start to do their yard work and trimming and, I mean, we're about to be full swing of that.
Well, Chief, if I could also say, just let council know that we've got a couple of folks who may call you because they're repeat offenders and they're going to get a ticket. I'm just wanting y'all to know that. And they've basically told us they're, we're going to continue to do what they were doing, so they're going to continue to get a ticket.
Come up with a fine.
But we warned them. We warned them about.
Yes, ma'am.
I know, you know, when you're putting out leaves and stuff, it's also, you don't get them close enough to the road. And so I, I know sometimes they may focus, you know, but if you've been warned.
This is usually on the sidewalk, in the road, or both.
And lastly, during the last quarter, we started spending our Internet Crimes Against Children grant money that we were awarded last year. And our detectives have been to some very extensive schools and are very highly trained, so much so that the Greenville Police Department is consistently in our department having us do forensic analysis of phones and computers that they do not have the capability to do, which I'm proud to say that. So we're trying to stay on, on the cutting edge of that technology because it's constantly changing.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Good job, Chief.
Thank you. You and your staff. Come on, Chief, I want you to come to the mic. Come to the mic, Chief.
You got too relaxed back there.
Yeah, you're just too relaxed.
There you go.
Yeah, come on up.
The one thing I'll add is that we do have several wildfire trainings coming up, but they're not scheduled yet. We've got two houses on Main Street and one out on Red Falls Road. And there should be a third one coming on Main Street soon.
On Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
What about the one that, I think they said that, I think I talked to you about, the one that has been vacant for many years, but it's not in a good condition to be burned down, it's training.
Mm-hmm. It's got, it's got to have some training value for us to burn it.
So what's the status is on that home?
Where we were burning it.
Yeah, where?
Oh, what's the, I forgot the address I talked to you about.
It's on Main Street. I think it's the second or third house past Dollar General.
But how about the one on Rutherford Street that's been abandoned so long? Second one on the left, across River Track, going west, Edwards Park. Yes.
Not, not a whole lot I can do with either one of those.
So just to let you all know that code enforcement, which is the newly involved Evan Johnston.
The man.
And Willie are starting to pick back up and get the status of some of these dilapidated structures. Again, just a reminder, if they're vacant, that doesn't mean that they would be subject to needing to come down. So obviously the test of substandard or dilapidated that would meet forcible demolition or burning, et cetera, that's a fairly high test. So again, they're, Evan's getting his feet wet.
Typically, people bring them to us when they either want to redevelop or get them off the tax boards.
So we do have some. We also have some others that have some appliances on the front porch, which are not allowed to do that. So, I know. So we're getting ready to pick back up on some of that. Obviously, grass is busy this time of year, so I will try to have in the next couple of months a report on where we are with structures.
Thank you, Chief. Happy to be late at work there. Evan?
I'm going to sing to him.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Like Ms. Parker said and a few others have referenced, spring has sprung. That means a lot for Parks and Rec inspections, code enforcement, et cetera. On the Parks and Rec end, we are wide open with baseball right now. Cal Ripken, we've got 816, 22 teams in those age groups, that's seven through 12. And they are, those games are currently underway. We've got another 16 teams in the T-ball and Pee-wee ages. Practices for those started next week. Babe Ruth, which we have two teams in that, that's the 13 through 15 ages. We have evaluations for them next Thursday. They'll get started practices shortly thereafter and their games start in March. We have a travel softball tournament this weekend. We've got a travel baseball tournament the last weekend of this month. We just finalized our concert and movie schedule, so you'll see that schedule roll out next month. Those are June, July, September, October. We skip August for the festival. On the inspections and code enforcement side, like I said, we're, we are doing some and starting to do more of code enforcement. That's steadily increasing as the growing season continues. And like Ms. Parker said, some, some dilapidated houses, some minimum housing there. On inspections, we're wide open on that. One thing that I did learn, or I am learning, is there's a lot more commercial stuff that goes on than I ever really realized. You know, that, that might be small or large, but there's a lot of it that goes on. We do have a lot of new construction projects underway. We've got Copper Creek, Brookfield, Villa Grande, places like that, but it's, everything is wide open and I'm certain will continue to be so for a while.
Thank you.
Evan, what's the age for T-balls?
So T-ball is four and five and Pee-wee is five and six.
Has to be at least four.
Yes, sir, that's correct, yep. And to, I know somebody was talking about summer work, you know, Parks and Rec has participated in that as well, but above and beyond just the summer work program, we have a number of part-time positions that we still have spots available for concessions, scorekeepers, site supervisors. So if anybody knows any young men or women that are interested in some part-time work, we do have those open.
What's your age?
It depends on the position. Typically concessions, we can go a little bit younger. Site supervisor, usually college, end up and scorekeeper is high school and up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Announcement, Ms. Perry?
Yes, sir. Let's see, we have a planning and zoning board meeting will be held Monday, April 17th at 7:00 here in the Assembly Room. Board of Adjustment meeting Tuesday, April 18th, 7:00 here in the Assembly Room. I believe Stephen has items for both of those meetings. The North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference will be held April 24th through 28th in Concord, North Carolina. And I believe everyone here is going, I think. The Recreation Advisory Board meeting will be Tuesday, April 25th at 6:30 at the Operations Center. Human Relations Board meeting is currently scheduled for Thursday, April 27th, 7:00 PM in the Executive Conference Room here in Town Hall. The Town Council and Manager Progress Meeting, again, we had to move that from our normal April timeframe to Monday, May 1st at 6:00 in the Executive Conference Room. We may spill out into this room depending on how many folks we have, but that move was due to the City Vision Conference. The Next Agenda Review Meeting is Thursday, May 4th at 4:00 in the Town Hall Executive Conference Room. And the next regular Town Council meeting is Monday, May 8th. This is our first 6:00 PM meeting here in the Assembly Room. And I just want to say thank you to Mayor and Council for a great attendance in the two agenda review meetings that we've had thus far. I appreciate your involvement and I hope that everyone's finding them helpful.
I have, I don't, you know, again, I think it's very helpful. I think it gives us some insight to when we get to the agenda, even though we receive the agenda, but it just helps us get familiar with what's going on so we can have some of our questions already together by the time we get here at, you know, for our regular meeting. So thank you for doing that.
All right. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight.
Mr. Moore?
Hope everyone had a great Easter. Ugly weather, but still Easter. I appreciate having Easter. Looking forward to the budget hearings we're going to have soon. And I hope we will look after our employees because we want to keep them as much as possible. And we did a great job last year and I hope this next year will be the same, same. That's all I have.
Ms. Robertson?
Just want to say thanks to all of our employees and for the job that they've been doing to keep our town and our citizens safe and doing well. Thank you.
Mr. Rice?
Looking forward to our trip to Charlotte.
Mr. Moore?
No comment.
Okay, Ms. Harrell?
Just kind of echoing Councilwoman Robertson, thank you to the town staff and Terry and then also continuous prayers to Don in his absence. Just being the, the new kid on the block, I think that learning with you all as a town council, learning together helps us to lead better together. So I really appreciate every, everything that everyone talks about in the different agenda review meetings. Thank you.
Yes, just a quick update on Don, Donald. I think he's doing well considering his intricate surgery. I believe his follow-up appointment is tomorrow, so I'm hoping that he'll maybe get some good news to at least return on a part-time basis. We're going to let him take his time and kind of get integrated back in as he feels up to it. But I know that he is very aware of all of you that have been asking and reaching out to him. I know he appreciates it. Wanted to give a quick update about some of our other projects that we've got going on, some of which have been mentioned tonight. I know that council has asked us to look into things like downtown lighting. I know the electric department was instrumental in getting some of the existing lighting changed out to LEDs. So that has certainly brightened the area, but we recognize the need for additional lighting in some areas, so we're trying to work towards putting a plan together. And along with that is our ever-present parking and traffic study that, that we've been doing. Our market property includes some additional parking and going back to two ways on Church Street behind Town Hall is going to do away with some parking behind public safety. So we're trying to find best places to create some additional parking for employees. And then obviously in our downtown area, creating some additional spaces for patrons that visit the businesses downtown. So again, it's trying to find the right timing to change some of these things so that we don't displace certain folks that would overload other areas. So it is a consistent work that we're trying to, to plan and move forward. And hopefully, as we discuss in the budget, some of the beautification efforts, I think council might be interested in undertaking as well in this area. We'll try to have a cohesive plan that, that works.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And this for me, I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff. Manager, you're doing a great job. Staff, staff is doing a great job with the community. Y'all are out there being visible, getting things done. For me, no calls are good calls. I had a boss tell me one time before, if you don't see me, you're doing good. If you see me, there's some problems. So the calls, I don't get. So y'all are doing a great job and y'all know that because y'all don't see me. I don't ask you for anything. So keep continuing to do great work, all of you. And that includes the board as well. A great board, get things done. I think this board has now turned the corner that we seem like we're working together to get things done for the progress of the citizens that win them. With that being said, can I get a motion?
The move.
Okay.
Got a motion to adjourn by Councilman Moore, second by Councilman Moy. Call for the vote.
Councilwoman Harrell? Absolutely. And Mayor Bertin Moy?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robertson?
Yes.
And Councilman Moore?
Amen.
Thank you.
Motion carried. We adjourn. See you next month at 6:00.
That's right.
Hope the rest of your day is better.